Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here to the last meeting of the year for the Minnehaha County Commission. And before we start the pledge, I wanted to go ahead and wish Commissioner Hiberger a belated happy birthday. She had a very big birthday. And we didn't put any buzzards or anything over her chair, but we want to make sure that we could wish her a happy birthday.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll start the meeting. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, we have a couple of special recognitions here today. First of all, we have our Treasurer, Pam Nelson, here. Pam, if you just want to come up to the podium.
So, if you don't mind, I'll just get with you.
Oh, I didn't know I had to speak.
Well, I'll give you an opportunity. So, this is Treasurer Pam Nelson's last official meeting with us. She's always welcome to come back anytime she wants to. But we have, as a, just on behalf of all the citizens of South Dakota, we have a big debt to pay to Pam. She has been in service since before I got out of high school, which was just a day or two ago. But she was first elected to office in 1979. She served in both the State House of Representatives and the State Senate. She served on the state PUC Commission. And then she came to Minnehaha County. She's served four complete terms as Treasurer. She's overseen the largest collection of property taxes and vehicle licenses in the entire state of South Dakota. And for all of your service, we just really want to thank you. We have a card with a little bit of appreciation.
Well, thank you very much for the recognition. I appreciate it.
And you're welcome to take the podium.
Well, I would like to thank all of you. I've enjoyed working as a county commissioner and with all of you. I also started, I was on the school board for nine years before any of the stuff that she mentioned, but, so, I've been around a while. And hopefully, I learned something, so, thank you so much. I appreciate the recognition. It means a lot to me. It really does. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have our Auditor Bob Litz attending this morning via Zoom, I believe. Bob, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Oh, look, we can even see you now. Briefly, we could see you. So, anyway, we also want to thank Auditor Litz for his years of service. He was first elected in 2010. He served on the Sioux Falls City Council prior to that. And recently, he oversaw the largest election in Minnehaha County. There were over 93,000 votes that were tallied and carefully counted. And we just want to thank you, Bob. I know you're convalescing and you're out of town right now, but, so couldn't be here with us in person. We do have a card for you, and we will get that to you. So, thank you very much.
Very good. And thank you. And I did want to say that I'm glad I got to know all the commissioners that I've known, you know, in my time in office, especially this bunch here. You guys pay attention to government.
Sure, I would let you go.
It seems to be one of those things that shorted supply here for government, so I wanted to commend you for that. And thank you for the recognition. And I will be back in Sioux Falls occasionally for a medical appointment, and I'll probably stop by. So, once again, thank you, Commissioners, for helping me learn things in life and professionally. I do appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Thank you for being with us this morning. All right. Well, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to our routine business. Just as a reminder, there are documents available for review next to Commissioner Hiberger, for anyone who needs any. If you could please silence your cell phones. And those of you who are attending via Zoom, if you could please put yourself on mute until such time as you plan to be speaking, that would be amazing. That'd be great. And Carol is here this morning, if anybody needs any special listening device. All right, that takes us routine business. First item, I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Second item is to approve the commission meeting minutes for December 15, 2020.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Third item are bills to be paid in the amount of $803,086.92.
Pay the bills?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I wasn't going to make any comment, but in reviewing the bills, it was a little bit of an extraordinary one. We had 17 bills for decedent transport for MedStar at $400 each. It's one of the responsibilities that we have to pick up people who died without supervision and take them in to be, to our medical examiner. But 17 is, I think, the most I've ever seen. So, and of course, we have many other bills like that that people don't really know about, but, thank you. That's my comment.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, I had a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. There's a couple of reports there that I'd recommend for your review. Both have a lot of really good information. We've got the report from the Juvenile Detention Center and from the Mobile Crisis Team. Next item are personnel actions. First, I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a special commission action to approve the salary of $4,400 biweekly for Bennett Kite, County Auditor, effective January 1, 2021. Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. This is a action to just record and document the salary for Bennett Kite for the three days, starting January 1 through the 3rd, up to the effective date of the resolution that you passed earlier this month. So, this is really more of a housekeeping item.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Just for housekeeping, for people who might be watching, you'll notice that we have a different set of start dates for the different people, that we have newly elected officials and for Ben, and those are all dictated by statute, and that's why there's a special action with respect to Mr. Kite, our new auditor's salary. So, we had a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to the next item, which is a special commission action to approve the hire of Bethany Jost as a paralegal with the Public Defender's Office at $27.37 per hour, effective December 30. Carrie.
You might recall that our salary guidelines have parameters for hiring new employees. In this case, Bethany is a rehire, and the request is simply to rehire her at the grade and step that she was at when she left earlier this year.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions, comments?
Just goes to show the county is a better place to work than the city.
Right? All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is special commission action to approve a temporary reclassification of one Deputy State's Attorney position to a senior trial attorney and to appoint Crystal Johnson as a senior trial attorney for the State's Attorney's Office at $4,371.20 biweekly, effective January 4, 2021.
And this action would just put Crystal back in the same position and salary that she was at when she had left. Daniel Hager is here to explain it further, if you have questions for him.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Daniel?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item E, which is special commission action to approve the hire of Eric Boge as the Chief Civil Deputy State's Attorney for the State's Attorney's Office at $4,824.40 biweekly, with a paid time off accrual of 6 hours and, 6.46 hours biweekly, effective December 30, 2020.
Many of you might know Eric Boge. He is a very experienced individual who is, we're grateful that he has accepted our chief civil attorney position. Because of the extensive amount of experience that he is bringing to the position, we're requesting the salary above policy. Here, Gan Daniel is here, in case you have additional questions.
I would move for approval. Second.
Motion in a second. Commissioner Karski, you want to make another comment?
There's at least three of them here coming from the city to the county, so.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And that takes us to the last item, special commission action to approve temporarily adding one accountant position to the Treasurer's Office by transferring Cindy Jepson from the Auditor's Office, effective January 4, 2021.
We are in the happy position today with all these special actions. They involve incredibly talented and experienced individuals coming to the county. This is a bit of a unique request. Cindy Jepson is related to Bennett Kite, who's the new auditor. This transfer accomplishes two wonderful things. It avoids any conflict with our nepotism policy by moving her out of the Auditor's Office, and it also takes advantage of her significant years of experience and knowledge of accounting and places her in another department where that would be really beneficial. So, we're asking for this request to transfer her. If it's approved, this is temporary only, a temporary over-hire in that department only.
Any questions?
It has, I should say, too, that's been discussed with Chris Swanson, with Cindy, of course, herself, and Bennett Kite, and everybody's supportive.
Commissioner Karski.
Just a few comments, I guess. You know, this has been kind of a lot of things in motion, and everybody's doing this, fully involved and informed of what's happening, too. It is a unique circumstance, very unique circumstance. We hired Mr. Kite to be our auditor, but he could have just as easily been elected to the position, and we'd be faced with the same type of thing. So, I'm glad we're doing what we're doing. It is the appropriate thing to do, and this has my full support, so, move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. And any other comments or questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item six, abatements recommended for approval. There's one item, City of Sioux Falls parcel ID 91419, 2019 property taxes in the amount of $2,079.34. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Kyle Saxo with the Equalization Office. This parcel was purchased by the City of Sioux Falls back in July 20 of 2018. It should be an exempt property, and for that reason, we are requesting the abatement of the $2,079.34.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for coming down. Yes. Roll call vote. Thank you.
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Hiberger? Aye.
Karski? Aye.
Now, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. So, that takes us to item seven, which are notices and requests authorize the auditor to publish notice of public auction of the Minnehaha County gravel pit on February 8, 2021, at 11:00 in the courtroom of the Old Courthouse Museum. Craig, good morning.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. As you have discussed at several meetings before, the county-owned gravel pit has been declared surplus. The county does not mine gravel anymore, and so, we have unmined gravel in land that the county has declared surplus, and the method that you selected was by public auction. That public auction is scheduled for February 8 at 11:00 a.m. in the Old Courthouse Museum, Weeman Auction. Kevin Weeman is going to be conducting the auction, and so, they'll have a screen there that they'll bring. They bring an 80-inch TV with them, and they'll bring sound, and that way, the Old Courthouse Museum will provide for social distancing. Certainly, we hope as many people show up as possible. The marketing materials that are being distributed to different contractors and other interested parties include a borrowings report, so that any potential bidder has some background. Geotech was the vendor who conducted that borrowing. And then, we also have the property platted out separately, as well as overhead maps. And then, it also is important to mention that because the property is immediately adjacent to the current law enforcement shooting range, it's very important, for public safety reasons, that law enforcement can continue to train there with the gun range. And so, language has been inserted into the deed for the property that would indicate that whoever buys the property would be subject to that continuing potential discomfort as shooting range operations continue. So, we just want to make sure that any potential buyer is also aware of that. And so, anyone who would have an interest in different gravel mining or aggregate, we would certainly welcome their participation in the auction. Additionally, you can contact the Commission Office if you would like to receive additional information regarding the auction or any other details, and you can get the full marketing package of all the materials. Commissioners, do you have any questions about that process? Thank you for letting me put in the plug to the public about participating.
Commissioner Barth.
Will people be able to bid online?
Right now, this is in-person only.
Okay.
Any comments or questions? Commissioner Karski.
This is land that's been owned by the county for close to 100 years, probably longer. Has not been, no taxes have ever been, have been paid on it in that time. The sale of this land will give cash to the county for us to pay our bills. It'll put it back on the tax rolls. And we haven't mined or used gravel in our highway department in decades. So, it's just land that was sitting there, and this is, this is a good thing, again, for everything all the way around, so.
Yes, Commissioner Karski, and actually, to build on your comment as well, for a section of land that is outside of city limits but in close proximity to Sioux Falls, this land is very well positioned compared to somewhere that could be further out in the county, and so, I think that could be a benefit for any potential interested party.
All right. Any other comments or questions? If not, I consider a motion.
Move approval? Authorize the auditor to publish notice of auction?
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. That takes us to opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody here this morning for public comment? All right, then. Are you here for public comment?
I am.
Oh, okay.
I guess I have some concerns that I expressed to most of you yesterday about the temporary transferring of someone from the Auditor's Office to the Treasurer's Office. In statute, statutorily speaking, there are only two areas that the commission has anything to say about in elected officials' offices. One would be the budget approval, and the other would be the hours in the building. Short of that, you have nothing to say about who works in the office, what, how the work is distributed, or any of that legally. So, what you did earlier today is in violation of state law.
Well, we've had it checked out by the State's Attorney. It was approved by the newly elected Treasurer. Doesn't take effect until the newly elected Treasurer is in office, so we're confident that our, our action was legal, but we appreciate you taking the time to express your opinion. Thank you.
Well, theoretically, she isn't the Treasurer yet, and I am. The action is taken now, not then. And whether she's the new Treasurer or whether she's not, you still don't have statutory authority to do that. She does.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, I'm glad you follow the laws when it's convenient.
All right, that takes us to regular business. Item 10 is a budget hearing to consider supplemental request to the 2020 annual budget. Kim Adamson, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. I'm bringing before you today a list of year-end supplements being requested by various departments in the General Fund, the 24-7 Fund, and the Highway Fund. These budget requests were noticed two weeks ago when you approved, when you gave us authorization to post notice for this budget hearing. Today, we have total supplements for the General Fund of $823,525. Those consist of a request from the Commission Office for $41,000 for multiple budget lines, part-time, group insurance, audit fees, publishing fees, and furniture and office equipment. The Coroner is requesting $41,525,000 for transportation costs because of a contract that was renegotiated with MedStar. The Elections Department is requesting $212,000 across multiple budget lines, overtime, part-time, payroll taxes, precinct officials, postage and printing, and these are the result of the higher-than-normal absentee voting and voter registration activity this year. Juvenile Alternatives is requesting $165,000 for, to fund the contract with Lutheran Social Services for shelter care. And lastly, in the General Fund, the Public Advocates Office is requesting a supplement of $5,000 for Personnel Services due to some internal transfers from the Public Defender, Public Defender's Office. In addition to this list of supplements, we have requests totaling $359,000 for COVID expenses in four different departments.
Excuse me, who's ever on Zoom? Could you please mute? We can hear a lot of paper shuffling. Thank you. Sorry, Kim.
So, the COVID expenses are from elections, $28,000. Facilities, $175,000. Jail, $140,000. And Sheriff's Office, $16,000. Are there any questions about those general fund items that are listed for supplement?
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bennega.
That's fine. Kim, I don't remember the exact amount that we received. We got two different grants for the election process. Do you remember what those two dollar amounts were that weren't recorded as income until after we put this together?
We do have two other, we have some grant funds. One was for $92,000 that was received about a month ago. That was, now, I'm not remembering that. It was from the CTL group. It was a Group 2 Advance and Promote Election Activity, and it was a private grant. We also have on today's agenda the next item coming up, another $98,500 for a new scanner, which is coming from the HAVA funds that the Secretary of State's Office holds for us.
I couldn't remember what the dollar amount was from a month ago, but effectively, if we add those two grants together with what was in excess in expenses for the election, we're almost cash positive.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Other questions on that?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
It seems like these supplements are greater than we normally have on the annual end. Are we able to make ends meet, so to speak?
We are. As Gerald mentioned, the Elections Department was significantly over-budget this year because of the primary and general election, all the absentee voting and voter registration activity. But we were able to secure grant proceeds to cover almost 50% of those overages. The other big component this year are the COVID expenses. That's almost $360,000 of this list. So, really, we're pretty comparable to where we are in other years. And I should mention that the COVID expenses are being claimed against our COVID relief fund dollars. They will put us over the amount that was allotted to us at the beginning of the process, but we are fairly confident that we will be able to collect the additional dollars from the State's available COVID relief fund.
Any other questions? Those are all good questions.
So, then, in addition to the, the General Fund requests, we have a supplemental request also for COVID expenses in the 24-7 Fund, and that was for some lab costs that were not passed on to.
We're tied in on the, kind of the north end there. That was a controlling element, and Travis was really nervous about adjusting the grade of the road between the bridge and this intersection.
DJ, I think this is, DJ, this is Commissioner Bender. Can you hear me?
The T-intersection.
Oh, I thought this was you on this.
Although, the bridge is fixed 100%, but the intersection elevation could be adjusted slightly.
Shannon?
Not a huge impact on the grade.
Can the Highway Department please mute themselves?
Between the bridge and, we 137. And he just couldn't get it to work, and, you know, the answer was to adjust the grade a little bit.
Shannon? Shannon? It's still going to go across on Zoom. Shannon? Shannon, please note you're on Zoom. He apparently cannot hear us.
Can't hear us.
Was ever a question about reviewing our audio system? I think we just verified it.
All right, well, I think they've moved on, hopefully.
I think he's still on there, but at least he's not talking.
Yeah, hopefully, I think DJ's calling him, so, all right.
All right. So, just to repeat, there is an additional supplement for COVID expenses in the 24-7 Fund of $24,000. And lastly, we have a request for the Highway Fund for a supplement of $3,388,000, primarily for contracted construction costs. But this is really the, the total request. It covers a number of budget lines, some that had savings, others that have budget overruns, and the net impact would be the $3,388,000.
About the highway, other than the fact that we're hearing about the bridge on the Zoom call? Commissioner Bennega.
Kim, I'm wondering if we can get a copy of the contracted construction line item, individual projects, rather than just the line item information? I would like to see which projects were over budget, which ones were under, and I couldn't find that in my list, but maybe I didn't see it.
Aggregated, the information that we provided was aggregated per project. And DJ is here. DJ may be able to help with that. Were you able to get ahold of Shannon?
Yeah. He's on mute now, sorry.
Okay.
DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. I heard part of your question, Commissioner Bennega, you want a project list showing the overages and unders for each project?
Yeah, I would like to see an itemization of the projects that we contracted out and how we came up with the net dollar amount of those.
Okay, we'll get you that later this morning.
Thank you.
Any other questions for DJ on the highway? I think, as DJ acknowledged in his memo to the commission that's on Dropbox, that these overages are not something that he intends to have happen again. And we are looking at software solutions to make sure we're better tracking this and, but it won't happen again. All right, anything else? Any other questions? All right, Kim, did you have anything else for us?
No, I'm just asking that you authorize the attached resolution to approve these supplements to the 2020 budget.
Okay, thank you. So, Commissioner Bennega.
Kim, I'd just like to acknowledge your extra work in the last month to be able to keep up with all the projects that are going on, along with all the issues that we're dealing with. I do appreciate your extra efforts.
Thank you very much.
So, Olivia, this is a hearing, so if there's anybody here who would like to speak in favor of the budget supplement requests, this is your opportunity. in favor of the budget supplement requests, this is your opportunity. Anybody here who would like to speak in opposition to the budget supplement requests? All right, hearing none. I would ask for a roll call vote.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, sorry, yeah, a motion would be helpful. Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Any other comments or questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 Bennega?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Kim. We do appreciate your extra work on this, so. All right, that takes us to item 11, which is consider a motion to authorize the following 2020 budget supplements using grant donations and reimbursements. First one would be emergency management from various department revenue ASNs to various department expenditure ASNs.
So, I would just like to provide, if I may, a little more background on this group of supplements. These are annual actions that are taken to supplement budgets for grant receipts that we receive. They come primarily to the sheriff's office and emergency management. And then we have a few additional items in the general fund and some pass-through grant funds. So, we have representatives from emergency management and the sheriff's office to speak to their specific supplement items.
Thank you. All right, so the first one is the emergency management.
Hi, good morning. Jason Gierman, Minion County Emergency Management. I'm here just for you to consider a motion to approve, approve this. Again, this is for grants that mainly emergency management and the sheriff's office deal with each year. It comes out of our expenses, and then as we get reimbursed through the year, we need to obviously bring that budget back to, back to even.
Questions for Jason?
Make a motion to do the emergency management supplements.
Motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Bar?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to the sheriff's office, requests for supplements. Joe Bosman, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman with the sheriff's office. Same thing as E M Director Gierman had mentioned earlier, we also receive several grants or donations or reimbursements from either federal, state, or insurance payouts from vehicle accidents that come in as revenue that we need to supplement at this time of year to offset the expenses that we have spent out throughout the year. Again, this is an annual action that brings our budget back up to, to neutral.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Commissioner Barth.
So, this has nothing to do with equitable distribution?
Not yet. That'll come back later. We still working on the.
All right. Anything else? So, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Aye. Bar?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. These is various county funds to various county budgets.
So, this last group includes several general fund items, the receipt of HAVA grant money for the elections department, some donations for human services, also emergency shelter grant money that came, flowed through to the county from the city for COVID-related response, and some safe home donations. Lastly, we have a supplement request for a federal and state grant money that was used to provide expert witness services.
Move for approval?
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. This takes us to item 12, which is a brief on the highway facility design and cost model. Craig Dewey, good morning.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office again. We have a number of individuals filing in who are part of the design team and the construction manager at risk, as well as the highway department. There's been a lot of work that has taken place over the course of this year. We initially tried to start the design of the highway facility back in February, and then this little thing called COVID has disrupted everyone's lives around the country and the world here. So, we had to put a little bit of a timeout on that process. We really got started in earnest in June with those meetings to prepare an RFP for architectural services. And ISG and CBS Squared are the architectural firms who are part of the design team, and we have been working diligently with them, as well as Henry Carlson, that provides some expertise as far as construction manager at risk services. And then, of course, Tegra, our owner's rep who worked with the county on the jail expansion, is also assisting the county on this highway design process, as well as the administration and extension building process. What you have before here today and the other parties, we'll go into more detail on this, but we have an initial concept design, as well as a cost model that has been built, that you will have presented to you, and then you'll have a few weeks to really process and digest that information as well, before you are asked for formal approval to move from the pre-schematic design phase that we're currently in right now. We're looking for your authorization at January 19th to be able to proceed further into the design model. And so, the next steps that you will see here is that time to answer questions after the presentation, and then we'll come back to you in the early spring timeframe with a guaranteed maximum price for the facility. And as you're aware, the total cost for this project that's being presented is at twelve million. That includes ten point four million dollars in construction costs and one point six million dollars in soft costs. And before I turn it over to Dick Strasberg from Tegra, I just want to thank everyone on the design team, the construction team, and the highway department for really being thorough and deliberate in the process up to this point. And so, we're certainly happy to answer your questions moving forward and appreciate your consideration. And again, we'll be back coming up soon. Next up will be Dick Strasberg from Tegra to talk a little bit more detail about how we have proceeded in the design process.
Good morning. Dick Strasberg with Tegra. So, as Craig said, we went through a selection process for the architect and also the contractor, and after we got them on board, the first thing we wanted to do is go look at other facilities, both on the private, ones that were built for private industry, and one that were built for public sector. So, our goal was to take lessons learned from both the private sector and the public sector. So, we use that as a base mark. If we look at buildings overall, the ones for public sector, they, they tend to be pricier, and we understand, you know, what are, what are the components that we need and what are the ones that we don't need? And so, the architects are going to present a, a design solution that I think we, we've come up with that's, that's really a pretty, pretty good solution for, for the dollars we're going to spend. So, once we got to that point of touring, then we, we took a real in-depth look at the needs. Now, DJ and his team had, there's another firm that was involved to do the master plan study a couple of years ago, master plan and needs analysis. So, this team basically took that and, and pushed it kind of to the next level. So, we did a pretty in-depth look at the needs analysis. Then we had, we had a lot of concepts. We looked at the existing site and studied that. We looked at other sites. And, and, and I can say, this was a, a very thorough process we went through on both of those, because there's a lot of moving pieces on it, and it was elected to stay at the existing site, and primarily because of the cost of replacing the salt storage, fuel island, other outdoor storage or cold storage, and the infrastructure of the site. So, then, once we got, made that decision, then we went to really start looking at, at the design, and I think it's fair to say, this, this is, we've had to squeeze very hard to figure out, how do we, how do we get this within, you know, a reasonable budget and still meet all the needs? And so, some of the things we looked at, there's an example of the private and the public sector, you know, sort of thinking coming together. It's a pre-engineered metal building, but we've got concrete at the bottom, four, four to six feet up. So, because that's where we saw, if you look at the buildings that were built in the seventies, where do they start really showing the wear and tear? It's at the bottom of the buildings. So, we've got concrete at the bottom. So, we've kind of, that's an example of taking the best practices from, from both private and public sector. So, right now, we're at the, we're really, we're really at this early, early design phase. This isn't, what you're going to see isn't a completed design. We've spent a lot of time on the budget. So, we'll first show you the building, and then we'll jump into the, the numbers.
Justin Steffel with ISG, project manager for ISG. Today with, you had an intro, you had a little bit of intro from Craig on some of the team members here, but we want to start today with presenting the floor plan with, floor plan. Bob with CBS Squared and Josh Muckinherd with ISG. I don't know if you guys want to actually go up to the screen, if that works for you, but we want to kind of show you what we've been up to the last couple of months with multiple design meetings with the highway department and other folks.
Take the left or the right? Sure. My name is Bob Sorsky. I'm one of the owners of CBS Squared. Just to give you a little bit of background, this is one of the building types that I specialize in, so you can't kind of, the group kind of hit the ground running, and ISG has, has done a lot of these as well, so we, we've been able to team and, and really tweak this to the point where we have it now. And we did, we were able to make up a lot of time, in part because of that, and I've known DJ for about seven years now, I believe, something like that, so we were a little bit familiar with his operation before we got here. The, the, these facilities are typically made up of three major chunks of space. One is going to be a maintenance type area for the equipment. Another one chunk of space is going to be for an office admin, the, the things that you normally need to run the day-to-day office pieces of this type of operation. Well, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So, they can hear you on TV.
Well, I don't know, but they want to do that.
It should be on. We want to hear you.
Can, can anybody hear?
Is it on, Tony? We are taping it, so that's why we need, we need to have a microphone.
Okay.
Tony, I think he's wearing it.
This doesn't appear to be on. My wife usually says I'm loud enough to lay this, so I can't believe that people can't hear me.
Is the green light on?
No, the green light is not on.
Craig? Craig, grab your.
Give it a second to turn on.
Oh, that's fine. The green light's not on on this one.
Madam Chair, we probably, he can have his associate gesticulate at the board. Budget supplement for batteries?
Do you think, do you think maybe you could come to the mic and that, and then he could help point out the places that we need to look at? Thank you.
I'd be happy to do that. Yeah. Correct.
Thank you. This is better.
Much.
Okay. So, to the upper part of the screen is the third component typically, and thank you for, for whoever's moving that around for me. That's fantastic. There's a vehicle, a heated vehicle storage area, and, and that area is typically houses the, the equipment that's needed literally on a day-to-day basis that has to be out on the road. It's not necessarily for seasonal storage of, of, of equipment or equipment that's used in a seasonal capacity, some in the winter, some in the, in the summer, summertime. So, when you think of those three pieces, those three chunks of space, they all have a, a different associated cost of construction, and they all need different pieces, different mechanical, electrical, and plumbing components that go along with that. So, whoever's running the screen, if you could maybe zoom out just a little bit? So, this is literally the most efficient floor plan that you probably, one could probably come up with. I've been doing these types of facilities for about thirty-one years, and, and arguably, they're all, they all kind of look the same, and I think the commissioners who are on the tours, and, and again, the commissioner's been phenomenally proactive in terms of participating, not just, not just being, kind of with a, you know, watching us in a non-participatory role. They were on the tours, they've offered design comments, they're looking at the plans, they listen to past clients, so it's, it's worked out well. That said, we've designed from the inside out, and we've kept everything kind of grouped together, and this really allowed us to move back to the existing site when we, when we were able to place this back on the, or needed, realized that we needed to move back to the existing site, and my cohorts at ISG will talk a little bit about that as well. That said, there was a lot of hand rigging, hand wringing, and I think the commissioners, again, can attest to that in terms of squeezing everything we possibly could and, and using space as multipurpose space wherever we could within that building footprint. And at that point, the, the project really took, the design really hit the ground running when Henry Carlson started putting some price components together, and that's where the structural system of this, of this project really took a turn, because it, based on what, what they were seeing for cost in their cost model, we were able to blend a design with a superstructure on the building that, that allowed it to be built at a reasonable cost, and then still get some of those components, as, as Mr. Strasberg said, the, the six, the six-foot-high precast around the bottom. Currently, I'm working with a, a highway department in Minnesota, metal building system, and it's a, it's a, again, a county highway department where you're literally, in, in some areas, you can push a golf ball through the bottom of a rotted steel frame, and in some areas, you can push a tennis ball through. And so, that's, that building's only forty years old, and the way to do that is to, again, invest some money in that bottom portion of the superstructure. So, we are able to blend that, and I think we're at, as Mr. Strasberg also said, we're at the very, very beginning of this. Well, my coworker back in Chippewa Falls is going to be taking over the screen here shortly to show you a, a great 3D image of, of a massing model of this. By no means are we far enough along to, it, it doesn't quite match this. The floor plan is much further along than the massing model or the 3D image, but I think we're at a point now where I really feel comfortable about moving forward. I know the people at Henry Carlson feel much more comfortable about the numbers and how we can blend this, and I think DJ's group are, are in a situation where they feel comfortable about moving forward with tweaking on the floor plan, as it, as it were, to, to make sure that what we're building actually works for them. Otherwise, you're at a point in, in your life where you have to say, what are we doing the project for? And we haven't sacrificed any of those things yet. I think we're at a, we're, there's been a lot of work put into this, into this design. I mean, this is, this is probably going to be ranked on the top ten of, of, of something that, that we, the amount of meetings that we've had, even amongst ourselves as the design team, it's, it's really paid off. So, Josh, would you like to add anything to that before we maybe go to a 3D model?
You know, not, not really. I think you did an awesome job explaining kind of the process and just the overall difference in the superstructure. I think that was a key point, because that was really a breaking point, if you will, in the, in the, coming, bringing the budget down and just really making the building as efficient as we possibly could. So, I think that was a.
That, that was one, and then, and then realizing earlier, earlier on, and I think the commissioners can attest to that about, it, it was pretty self-evident that in order to cut some of the dollars that we needed to out of this project, we were going to have to stay at the existing site, or the, the county was going to have to stay at this existing site, because when you start replacing salt sheds and, and those things, maybe in a different period of time than you normally would have to, given, even if they have three years of life cycle and, you know, left in the structure. At that point, that really was the, that was probably the other big key. We, we, we can, we can argue about all day long about taking four hundred square feet out of a room or two hundred square feet out of a room, but at the end of the day, the, the site and, and the superstructure were probably the two things that really helped drive the, drive this to a point where we can feel comfortable coming, coming today here in front of you and asking to proceed to the next step, so.
I did have one, one last point to make, just for clarity. As you'll see on the site plan, when we get to that, the orientation of the building, the, the offices, kind of this bottom portion is closer to the highway, more visible. So, there is some thought, you know, put into the, the, how the building looks from that side. So, that won't be a metal building necessarily. We've right now, with the budget we have, are able to get a, a nice architectural precast finish on there. So, it will have a aesthetically pleasing, a, a building that, you know, the county will be proud of, but it's still within, you know, a reasonable budget as well.
And, and also, it, it should be pointed out that we've already, we've already thought about how. about how to add on to this building. So whatever we're doing today is, is, is easily adjusted or modified in the future depending upon how you grow. So that was obviously one of the key components that we, that had to be in this project. So...
So just for purposes of the public, we've got several projects, building projects going on. And so we've kind of divided and conquered with respect to commissioners. And Commissioner Karski and Commissioner Benega have put in lots and lots of time on this. And for Commissioner Heiburger and myself and Commissioner Barth, this is our first time to really get a chance to see the whole team together and, and, you know, kind of hear about the final presentation. So we really appreciate, appreciate you coming. My, my question was, so what is the life of the building with the substructure that you're, the superstructure you're proposing?
It's a great question and one that comes up literally all the time. So typically, if you, and I'll give you the bookends, okay? Because at the end of the day, once ISG and CBS Squared leave this project, the burden is on you and Mark to allocate funds to maintain it. And so it's, it'll last as long as you, you know, do regular maintenance on this project. So I'll, I'll just give you the bookends and then I'll give you my personal opinion where, where you're probably at. Typically, on a, on a metal building for a county highway maintenance facility, it's been my experience in looking at doing, at this, this type of building and this type of building system, because of the number of employees and the trucks and the more roads, a metal building will typically last about 40 years before you really have to start investing some serious dollars in reconstruction or, or heavy maintenance. Okay? If you, the other end of the bookend is it would be a precast concrete structure. And at that point, you, it, the life cycle of a typical building at that, for the, again, a county highway maintenance facility, will typically run you out to 80 years. And the, and the, the cost difference, the initial cost difference between the two is about 5%, okay? And that's only on the superstructure costs, not on the entire project costs. So your, 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 your buy-in cost is substantially different. And when you think about it, it makes sense. Because when you build a building out of either superstructure, you still have concrete floors, you still have HVAC systems, you still have plumbing systems, okay? And they're all the same. In your case, if you only have a certain amount of money, and I think all of our clients only do, you're forced into this decision-making process. So to answer your question, and this is then my personal professional opinion, I think you're going to be talking some, someplace easily in the 60 to 65 to 70-year range, in part because you're spending, and we're still spending money on that concrete bottom, you know, of the building. And that's, that's really where the aggressive, the salt, you know, comes into. Because even when the, the floor is dry, there's always just a, it's, it's, you can't see it, it's, it's so fine. But there's a certain amount of salt that moves across the floor, just, just like on a street corner when you have dust and dirt and cars pick it up and throw it in the air. So that's what's the aggressive part about, about degrading these buildings. So that and washing, not having a dedicated vehicle wash. That, if you just wash in a, in a vehicle's parking stall, that's going to ruin a building phenomenally quick. So...
Thank you.
Yep.
If I, just a quick comment.
Commissioner Karski, yeah?
Was it Boyer Trucks? Is that the one that's similarly constructed, brand new, opened up in the last few months?
That is. Yep. It was Boyer.
And it's very, they did the same thing, six-foot concrete with the metal on top. So it, it was a great recommendation from the design team and Henry Carlson Construction. So we're doing what we can to make it a building that lasts and, and has reduced costs, basically. You know, the other thing is, everybody, well, not everybody knows where the highway facility is. I think all the commissioners do. And we're in a, kind of in an interesting area. And what is it going to look like out there in 45, 50, or 60 years? Are we still going to want our highway facility in an area that, you know, in 90 years, it won't make a whole lot of sense? So we're also trying to factor it in kind of as a business decision, you know, what, I don't think too many of us will be around 45 or 60 years from now. But, um, you know, we do want to make good decisions that make sense for the long term. And, you know, 100 years sounds great, but we got to really do it within our budget and be looking ahead as what will this area look like at that, at that point also.
Thank you. All right.
All right.
We kind of hijacked your presentation. We'll let you get back to it.
No, no, that's fine. We'll go to this, this next slide. All right, yeah, right, oh, oh, there you go. Perfect. This is just a precursor to the 3D image that my coworker will bring up on the screen here in a little bit and maybe twirl you around the building. But again, in, in this image, this, this 3D Revit model, and again, it's just massing. This is not how the building's going to look. But it's a massing model. It does give you and show you in a three-dimensional vertical view, the lower portion is the office. The second highest portion to the left is the vehicle storage. And then the higher portion to the right, again, that, that is the vehicle, equipment, maintenance area. And of course, it's higher because it has a bridge crane in that, that helps facilitate repairs. So we'll get into that in just a little bit. Again, you don't see the, the precast concrete bottom yet or any of those details, but they'll be fleshed out here in the next round of design if you give us the go-ahead to, to do that. So with that, I'll probably turn it over to the ISG folks to discuss the site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, you want me to stay over here at all? Are you good?
Stay over there. You're doing great.
Fantastic.
So there's going to be a couple of site options. David Daxler with ISG, President. Couple of site options that we've been running through. Now, we, we wouldn't typically go to this level on the actual site analysis because we are still in this conceptual phase. But we really wanted to flesh out, what did that full stormwater layout look like? What did the utility connections look like? And I think we have a pretty good handle on that. So this is the first option. And if, and you'll see in the next, a couple of slides down where we're doing the master plan of the overall facilities, not just this facility. But this is really located directly to the west of the existing facility. There's an open lot there. It kind of straddles in between those. There's some trees there that have actually been taken down. So that's where that main facility is actually going to go. The stormwater for that is all being captured in this particular option on the north side and then would outlet to its overall natural drainage pass to the north. But there is the large depression in, Muck, can you kind of point to that detention area?
You're talking?
Yep. Yep. So that detention basin is sized so that it would decrease 30 to 50% of the stormwater that would actually run off of this on that peak flow, flow rate to the north. But that's really outlined that in this. And this is just, again, in the planning phase and not been fully fleshed out. But really wanted to get a handle on the feasibility and what we would be doing for both the stormwater and the utility connections that are also priced. If you want to go to the next one, we have option two.
And just for clarity, just in case anyone was wondering, the, so you can kind of see briefly, just to give you an idea, that's like the existing, like office admin facility right now. So we're just west of that.
Good call, Josh. Yep. So we did also want to look at one overall outlet. And this is option two. It is significantly additional cost. But if we wanted to take all of that stormwater for the entire site and connect that all the way back to that southeast area, and we really placed our detention basins on the northeast corner and the southeast corner of the particular lot. And then that full outlet would go to the southeast, back towards the, the 60 right-of-way. Yep. So looking at this, is this most certainly feasible? There's a couple of things that I do have an issue with on this particular option. A, significantly more money. But B, the other issue that I do have on this particular option is the fact that by the time we get the grade to connect all the basins around, we have all of this swale that kind of encompasses the entire site. And it's at a, a pretty minimal grade. So I do worry at times that then, when there's grass and there's debris buildup in that, that particular swale, that then you'll have slight water ponding. And we always hate that from a mosquito effect, from just an overall sittliness, and you get cattails and things like that growing. But we did flush that out as option two, as a feasible option for the overall grading plan. I think the last sheet that we're, that we showed here, what we did want to show you folks is the fact that most certainly we're, we're not replacing the salt storage right now. We're not replacing the unheated storage. We are relocating one of the existing buildings. Josh, you want to point to that relocated existing building?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's this, this square right there?
Yep, is being relocated. But we did want to show that we have master plan, that we can fit all of this on and we can make sense in all of the facilities being reconstructed at some point in time on the existing site with significant room to the east, actually, of your existing site. But we wanted to show all those, and all the lines going all over the place is actually us running auto-turn to ensure that, that layout is, is appropriate. One modification that we did talk about with this and, and based on some of the geotechnical port, of actually moving that salt storage to a different location. And, and that would probably come down just south of the unheated storage to the southeast there. So that's what I have from the site. Any questions on the particular two site options? We're still most certainly flushing those both out, but really think that this is an advantageous site for this particular facility.
What's the relocated existing structure that you want to add on?
Can you show where the existing is?
So this is, this is the, this kind of white, you can see it underneath. That's the existing building that would be relocated over here. And that's a, like, storage, vehicle storage.
Unheated storage. Yep. Yep.
And just to add a point of clarity to that, that's, that's just another example of one of the, the efficiency items that we looked at. Rather than building, you know, a brand-new cold storage right now for everything, we're, we're really reusing what we can on the site. And then having the ability to expand this building in the future when that comes. So by moving this over there, it's a very cost-effective way to maintain as much storage on the, the site as, as possible.
And we're actually maintaining the existing facility for, for that storage for now as well. So we all, we know that that'll be a future phase and the unheated storage could most certainly be a future phase at a later time. But right now, we're really using as much as we can on that existing site for what we have for existing buildings to actually encompass that maintaining that we're just going to maintain and construct right now, the overall facility on that west side.
Commissioner Karski.
The second conceptual design, if you can just go up one screen.
Yeah. Yep.
You, you talk, and we haven't had a very detailed conversation about this, other than I think Commissioner Benega and I saying, we have to take care of the drainage issues out there.
Absolutely.
And we want you to show us what it is. You, you say significantly more. I mean, what, what's significant?
Yep. I think we... Yeah.
A couple hundred thousand dollars to take care of our runoff and be a good neighbor. Because that part on the southeast corner, a lot of that's coming from our salt storage facility.
Yep.
And, you know, there's, it's not good.
Yeah.
We need to be a better neighbor out there than what we have been, in my opinion. And I, I even think that that should be done regardless of whether we were doing a maintenance facility. And it's, the cost of that should be looked at
Yep.
outside of this because it, it just has to be done.
And, and I know I had outlined, you know, one option that I really think, when we get into the design, I think an option that really makes a lot of sense and, and doesn't create the swale that is all the way around the site, is really if you look at option one and having that north drainage area that would really take care of the stormwater for the new facility, but then still constructing the basin that would be to the, to the southeast with some level of a, you know, a four-bay in it, so that you're getting some settlement out prior to, to actually discharging, I think is a real option. And it's probably a more cost-effective option and something that we would most certainly evaluate in that. But we are decreasing the overall peak runoff on all of the options significantly, just to follow in line with, with that overall impact as well. Yep.
If I may?
Yes.
Engineers like to use the term swale. What's the difference between a swale and a ditch?
Nothing.
Okay.
It's just nice. Yep.
Just to be clear.
Yep.
So as you're doing the master planning, what's the plan for the existing admin building? Will that be, will that be torn down once the new?
Yeah. If you, if you go to the overall master plan, what we had anticipated there was the actual existing facility and the existing admin would all be removed. And really, what we're looking at there is potentially that salt storage. Because if you look where the salt storage is right now, that ground falls off significantly to the north. So if we were to put that salt storage in that particular location, we'd have to haul in a significant amount of dirt. And what we could do avoiding that is actually move that salt storage, the new salt storage eventually, to that facility right where the, the, the old facility is and, and decrease our footprint, decrease the construction cost. Correct.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Yes.
Is the cost of removing the existing building going to be in the bid? Or is that going to be something that comes afterwards?
That would be in a, that would be an additional phase. So right now, the whole, Josh, can you show what we're talking about for the full improvements only on this, right?
For this portion of the project?
Yes.
So it'd be the, the new facility and then moving this storage building over to right here. So the existing facility and both of these would be utilized for the time being. And as you can see, these, kind of these colored lines that are going through, through here, that was our way of making sure that all the trucks would be able to turn and, and maneuver between the existing buildings. So that'll be here for initially. So you can see they're able to still get around all of the existing facilities that'll be remaining.
Yeah. Good question, though.
Other questions? All right. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Before we turn it over to Henry Carlson for cost, are we able to jump to the Zoom screen sharing and jump to the 3D model? If we're, I want to be respectful of time. Are we, are we okay on time?
That'd be fine. Thank you.
And Jay, if you can hear us, go ahead and display your 3D model when you can.
You'll have to bear with us, only because every time that Zoom is not the same as Teams, it's not the same. Webex, which is not the same as...
We all live in the same world, you do. We're all, we're all dealing with that.
Yeah. Just bear with us.
Jay, if you can hear us, go ahead and hit share.
Okay, Jay, you're on. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can.
Awesome. Thank you. So my coworker who took the, helped me develop the, the floor plan and, and put some lines to it. Jay, if you can, maybe we'll start, yeah, start right there in the front. And again, as I mentioned, the lower, the lower level roof area is that office admin, that's one of the third, or one of the three components. And then Jay, maybe just twirl it around, go around clockwise to the, yeah, there you go. Thanks, man. And so now you're seeing what, you can kind of start to, from here. Perfect, Jay. Thank you. You can kind of see the profiles of the building. Okay? And, and obviously, the, a pre-engineered metal building system lends itself to a low-sloped roof. And you can see that we've picked essentially just to the right, you can see where the high, the very high roof and the, and the lower roof with the office admin area that they kind of shed water to the right. And the large area, the heated vehicle storage sheds it to the left. And so we're splitting stormwater because that's the one, one, typically the one disadvantage with going with metal building systems when the building is so large. What do you do with water, snow, and ice? Because all of that is coming off of the building at one time. And of course, gutters are susceptible to being ripped off and/or ice dams. And then you have to do heat tape and all of the other things that go along with this. So we think we have a solution that's going to, that's going to work. And then Jay, if you wouldn't mind, again, continuing around and going to the, yep, there you go. Thank you. So you'll see some window penetrations or fenestrations on this, on this side of this facade. Those are actually large translucent, translucent, better insulated window systems or panels than what a typical window is. And the commissioner saw those on, on our tours. We have them on this side in particular, but that's not to say that when, when the final product or the design is fleshed out, you'll, you'll also see that. What we're trying to do is, is garner as much natural light up near the ceilings as we possibly can. as we possibly can in those areas because we don't want to leave lights on. We want to get as much natural light during the course of the day inside of an area that's typically not occupied continually. That's what the goal is. Jay, if you want to keep going around clockwise there. So now we're coming back to what, what you'll, this is kind of the northeast corner. If you remember on, in your mind's eye about where, where this sits on the site plan. The far left door, I'll work from there is the wash, door coming out of the wash bay. Jay, if you wouldn't mind pointing to that just a little bit, thank you. And then the next one over is a, is, is, is a exterior, second exterior access to the, to the north from one of the maintenance bays. We always like to double load our maintenance bays or at least one when we can. So in case a piece of equipment isn't finished, being worked on or we're waiting for, and another one has to get in, we can do that without clogging up the efficiency. And then again, the, the pieces here facing to the east, the other two doors to the right are, are the double loaded corridors for the heated vehicle storage and truck acts, vehicle access from that side. Jay, if you wouldn't mind going around to the, to the, yep, there you go. Just for reference, the taller piece is somewhere in the neighborhood of about thirty-two feet, I think, by the time we take into the account, the depth of the bridge crane, given the span for that super, that piece of the superstructure and to clear the structure of the building. The piece on the backside and the heated vehicle storage is in that, is in that twenty-two foot range, plus or minus. And so now here again is the south piece. The wash bay door is furthest to the east. We also again like to put translucent door systems on the wash bay in part because we want, when the vehicles are cleaned, you want as much either natural light or artificial light as you possibly can in order to make that happen. And then the three bays, overhead doors to the, three bays to the left, those will be for maintenance bays. And then you're back basically far to the left again, you're back over to the office admin area. If you're wondering what that taller piece is in the very center, that's as, that's as tall, yep, thanks Jay. That happens to be essentially a mechanical mezzanine. And one of the things that the group has talked about from the outset, and I think the commissioners saw it really on, on almost every project, I think that there was one that had some rooftop units on it. And, and you know, we heard, you know, Mark was part of the conversation, your Mark, Facilities Mark, was part of the conversation to start with. And we, we were all in concurrence that one of the things, one of the goals also was to keep as much of the mechanical systems in, inside the building envelope as we possibly can. And that, that's, that can be a challenge, but one of the things that, why that is, is because now your, your mechanical equipment, which is a huge expense in this building, they, that, that lasts longer. And in fact, it can last almost as twice, twice as long when the, when the HVAC equipment is inside of the building envelope as opposed to it, it is on the rooftop. So while we brought down the cost, we didn't sacrifice in my, at least in my opinion, and the commissioners can maybe speak to that as well, that we didn't sacrifice any of the, any of those long-term quality things again that you would expect in a public infrastructure project. The, the neat thing about where it sits right now and why it's as tall as it is is because I can grab clean air, okay? So we're, we're situated in that footprint where we're not bringing in vehicle exhaust, you know, with an idling truck sitting outside. And the other thing is we're exhausting air out in the center, almost like a chimney. So again, the, you know, dirty air, if you will, from the inside, both, you know, from an occupied human standpoint or vehicle truck standpoint, it's leaving a great spot and we have access to bring clean air in. So I, it, that piece of it really worked out well and putting it up on a mezzanine, so putting it up high, so. With that, I think, Jay, I think that's about it unless the commissioners would like to rotate or see some specific thing around the perimeter of it again, so.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very interesting.
On the numbers guys.
Good morning, commissioners, Dave Deary with Henry Carlson Construction. And yeah, as Gene put it, we've been working on the numbers side. So if we could get to the cost model summaries. And Mike, if you could introduce yourself.
I'm Mike Carlson again with Henry Carlson Construction.
Okay, if we could just blow that up just a hair. And probably just go down to the bottom, that's what everybody's concerned about. Okay, what you see here is we've been working shoulder to shoulder with the design team and the ownership group and that owner's rep for several months now. And we built several cost models. And this summary sheet actually just shows the most recent four. And the number that we're looking at right now is the number on the left. We're looking at a building that's about sixty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-four square feet. In our opinion, the cost for that facility is going to be just under ten point four million dollars. This is the same number that Dick would have showed on the overall project budget. And it's taken a while to get to here. But we've worked really well with this team. We've had some very, very good discussions and arm wrestle over a lot of things. But we feel really good about this number and the scope of the project. And we believe that this, this delivers the project that was, meets the expectations of what the owner wanted from the beginning. Just a couple of things that I do want to touch base on and this is still a work in progress. And so we're going to continue to update these cost models as the design progresses. And we've had several discussions about changing the building slightly. We've got some inside outside corners that I'm pretty sure we're going to eliminate. And we're actually not going to spend money doing that, but we're going to gain some square footage in the building. So we're just going to make the building a little bit more efficient. But at the end of the day, we're comfortable that this building can be built in that ten point four million dollar construction cost range. There is a lot more detail than what you see on the summary sheet. But I think Mike has been doing, you know, Mike has been doing the heavy lifting and I think he's measured over four or five hundred different building components and coming up with this model, so. Mike's worked his tail off to help us get to here, so want to make sure that he gets some of the credit. Any questions about cost?
Questions, comments?
I would say Mike went through more than five hundred different items. It seems like every meeting we had, we had multiple discussions and frankly, we were impressed with Henry Carlson's and the group's expertise in trying to get some of the things that we talked about over the very beginning of the process to where we're at right now was phenomenal because we made some significant changes and reduced the cost by a significant dollar amount. And I appreciate their professional support.
Thank you.
Maybe we could, if we could slide the, the, the screen up to the master budget. Okay, so we've got the, the ten four in for construction. We've got the corresponding architectural fees, fee for TEGRA group and then other soft costs, that's things that are like the geotechnical work that we are doing out on site, survey, construction quality testing, legal fees and so on. And then on the fixtures, furniture and equipment, we've plugged a hundred thousand dollars in for that. We basically aren't to that yet, we haven't, we just took out a per person number, got to vet through that yet. And then we're carrying a four point five percent contingency on it for the owner. So one thing that we try and put in these projects is we like to put in alternates. So the goal is, the way that the CMA process works, as you know, is we take bids on all the, all the trade work. So all the subcontractors all get competitively bid. And right now we have the estimate and we'll go through, once we get to the guaranteed maximum price and eventually the construction documents, we'll have hard bid documents. So if we end up having a variance there, we'll have, you know, potentially up or down. And the construction can, the owner contingency helps it, helps it, if it goes one direction and if it goes the other direction, we want to have it. So if we've got extra dollars, that we've got alternates already designed in. So within the architect contract and the construction contract, they both have five percent already in their fees. So they'll design out five percent more of a building than what we'll actually have, you know, in the budget in the event that the bids come in better than what we anticipate. Any questions on the process? I think we've made good process, it seems like it's been slow because of COVID, but I think overall we've, we've got some good momentum going now.
Have you identified any of those alternates at this time?
We have not.
Okay.
We've had, we've had a lot of discussions on what they could be, you know, anything ranging from, should we gut the existing building and maybe put in some other doors, use it for whatever the department may need to, you know, having other things where there's more glass in the offices or, you know, we, we really haven't got to that yet.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bender, Benega.
Your Bender.
Yes, I will try to remember that.
I just want to make a comment about the bonding issue, although we don't know what the rate is at this point. But since we started this project, we're in a very favorable market and we know that the bond interest rate's probably going to be going down. And we believe that we're going to be able to build something that's going to be very favorable for what we've retired in bond debt on the current situation we're in. So we won't know obviously until all the pieces are put together, but I think the timing of doing this and doing it at this particular price is a win-win for the next forty, fifty years on what we need as a county highway department.
Commissioner Karski.
Thank you, Commissioner Benega and to all you guys. Building a highway facility definitely is not as sexy as building a jail. You know, this is a project that's been talked about within the county for close to a decade of, we really need to be looking at this and we're finally, finally here and, you know, we've talked about the what and the how much, but we really haven't talked about the why. And this is, we here probably understand the why, but this is for the public. Our highway department is doing their best to operate out of a facility that for the most part was built in the nineteen fifties. And if you think back, you know, so what? But if you think back to what ag equipment looks like, and this is what, you know, we're working with is big equipment, bigger equipment to get the job done versus what was used in the fifties. What does a tractor look like in nineteen fifty to what does a tractor look like today? And we're trying to put this equipment in there and maintain it. And I would say that, you know, we're, we're really not taking good care of the one thing that we really should be taking care of and that's our staff. And having a proper facility for them to do their job safely and adequately is, is really the utmost of importance. So we're working in a facility that again is pushing seventy years old. And it's just time and this is, as Commissioner Benega said, the opportunity is best. We can do this without increasing any taxes. We're retiring debt, we have the cash flow to do it and we can do it at a very, very good interest rate. So that's the why, why are we doing this? So, thank you.
And I'd say you would, you do bring up a really good point. We did put together a facilities task force that you helped chair and I would tell you to a person, everybody on that that went toward all of our highway facilities were, I'd, I'd say appalled, might be a fair word, by this, by our current facility. And so I, I don't think that there's any question that we need to do this. And I, I personally just really appreciate, you know, it's easy to do a presentation like this. Well, not easy for me because I just sat here, but, but it's really all the hard work that's gone into getting this, you know, all the really painful work of arm wrestling over, you know, what you can and can't afford. And to, to bring us a project today that fits the scope and the budget is an accomplishment to be recognized. And so I, I too want to thank all of you for that hard work. And I think Commissioner Heiburger had something she wanted to say.
I have a couple, well, I actually have a couple of questions and if they're too far in the weeds, then we won't talk about them now. But I want a couple of different questions I had, are we going to use standardized? You know, we're working on standardized officing for this building, are we going to be using that at highway also in the, in their administration part?
Yeah, once we get into the design phase now of really starting to look at the details, we're going to try and keep it so it's consistent with what will be happening in this building and the extension building.
Okay, I have another question, and this may be too far in the weeds too. And I was just wondering about heating and cooling of the building. Obviously you're heating and cooling the administrative part and the storage part where the trucks are, you will be heating, I would assume, but not cooling.
Correct.
Are you going to use forced air, are you going to use waste oil, are you going to use floor heat for us? A cold truck, floor, floor heat is really good and so I'm just, I don't know if you're even that far.
Yeah, that's kind of where we're at now, we'll be getting into that level of detail.
Okay.
Conceptually, we know that we'll have the equipment inside and past that, we, we need to still work through that. We don't have rooftop units.
Thanks.
Good questions, so, any other questions? Anything else you guys wanted to say?
Dave Deary, why don't you go first?
I would just like Bob to circle back. You had asked a question about the life expectancy of this building and he gave you the two big ends. And this building is actually a hybrid. And so I'd like Bob to speak to where we really think this life expectancy of this building is.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just to reiterate, I think we're in that sixty year, sixty-five year range because as Dave talked about, it really is a hybrid system, but it's going to carry you to the next phase. Why I'm really comfortable and I think I can speak for the ISG folks about this hybrid and why it's going to work for you is because it really touches on, I think, what the two commissioners have, have referred to or have been part of, particularly Commissioner Karski talked about the business component, you know, of this. You know, government has a piece of, of, has to be, there's a piece of it that's like a business. I know I'm on the town board in the township I live in, so I get it. I, I sit on that side of the table every, you know, once or twice a month on, on Tuesdays, so. And, and yet at the same time, the, the constituency is asking you to build right, you know, so that you're not keep, the folks don't keep coming back in front of you. So I do think that you're right. We've hit the sweet spot on this, so, but yeah, sixty years, you'll, you'll get there without any problem, so.
All right, thank you.
So in closing here, I'd again like to acknowledge all the hard work that all of our different vendors and the highway department have also put into this project. There's been a lot of rolling up our sleeves and sharpening our pencils to get the project within scope and budget. And I think Commissioner Bender, you really hit it on the head. What we'll be looking for on January nineteenth is your approval if this general concept works for the scope and the budget to be able to proceed. And then later in the early spring, we should be able to come back to you with a guaranteed maximum price. And really, as we look at that, that would allow us to go and bid out the project to construct. But we want to make sure that we're actually have the highway department in the new facility before snow falls in twenty twenty-two because as we know, keeping highways safe when it snows, particularly on days like today, when we're getting a significant amount of snow, they need to be mission ready to be able to accomplish that. So that's overall timeframe of the project. And then certainly if you have any closing questions, we'd be happy to answer. But we wanted to give you a few weeks just to maybe ask additional questions if they do come to mind before we'd be asking you to actually provide authorization to proceed in the design phases.
All right, any final questions? Well, thank you all for coming this morning, it was great to see all your faces, I've heard many of your names, so thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you.
All right, so that takes us to item thirteen, which is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County for payment of pretrial service expenses. Michelle Boyd, thank you for patiently waiting. Thank you.
We never get to see you anymore.
I know, I know. That might be all right though, right? Good morning, Michelle Boyd with the sheriff's office. The first item I have is I would like approval, um, to sign the renewal agreement with Lincoln County for our pretrial services for the year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. We have been providing pretrial for Lincoln County since December of twenty eighteen. And, um, currently we have three full-time positions. And the, um, MacArthur grant pays for one of the, or excuse me. Uh, the MacArthur currently pays for a halftime of one of those. And so the other halftime is going to be with this grant, um, between Lincoln County and Minnehaha County. So it's for seventeen-five and that would be for a quarter of that halftime position that's not covered by MacArthur. A little bit confusing, but, um, the sheriff's office, as you know, just take, took over pretrial in November. And so we will continue to work with Lincoln County on this service. So are there any questions with that? It's just to sign the contract with them.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item fourteen, which is also yours. It's consider a motion to authorize the sheriff's office to accept the Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant for the Comprehensive Opioids Stimulant and Substance Abuse Program. It's a multiple.
Yes. And if you remember, in May of twenty twenty, we were in front of you to ask for authorization to apply for this grant. In October, we were awarded the grant. And so what I would like to do is to be able to accept that grant within the sheriff's office, much like we do at the Highway Safety Grant and the JAG Grant. Within this grant, we will be working with the state's attorney's office for an adult diversion officer and also with Avera for, uh, peer support navigator, some case management. And then we're going to also do some sober and safe temporary housing that we're looking to subcontract out for a provider to operate those services. So that's the main parts of this grant. It's a three-year grant for nine hundred thousand dollars. And, um, so if you see fit, we'll accept that grant and get started on it.
Questions for Michelle?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other items? So Michelle, what kind of like reporting out will you be doing about? What kind of tracking are you guys going to be doing of the services that are provided so that we can see? I mean, I don't know what you have to, if you could just remind us, what kind of reporting do you have to do back to the grant provider? And what could the commission expect to see about?
For the COSAP grant?
Yeah.
Yep. So, um, we have partnered with USD and they'll be doing some of the data collection for those quarterly reports. I'll be coming in front of you. We're going to sign some subcontracts with Avera and USD to do some of that stuff. And so, um, I can certainly come in front of you regularly to report that out, send emails. Um, but we put, we, we report that to the, um, um, sorry. Let me get my grants straight here.
Bureau of Justice.
Bureau of Justice Grant on the COSAP, yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, we had a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item fifteen. Consider a motion to authorize the sheriff's office to purchase a twenty twenty Dodge Ram fifteen hundred SSV from Billion Auto in the amount of thirty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars. Joe Bosman, good morning.
Hello again, Commissioners. Joe Bosman, the sheriff's office. This morning I have a request in front of you for the sheriff's office to purchase a vehicle from Billion Auto here in Sioux Falls. It's a twenty twenty Dodge Ram, uh, truck that is specially equipped with the, uh, equipment and vehicle necessities for law enforcement purposes. One thing nice about this option here is that we've identified a local vendor that has it in stock and ready to roll rather than, um, getting it from out of town. And Billion Auto will match the state bid price. Uh, that's something that the commission, I think, has talked about in the past and we've recognized as well, an option to buy local, it would go a long ways here. Uh, the budget authority for this would still come out of the twenty twenty, uh, sheriff's office budget that we have. Uh, a small amount of unspent funds to cover this cost of this truck. The setup of it would be so that, like in weather like today, we can still get out and respond to emergencies and, uh, get to calls for service. One of the vehicles that is going to be replacing has a lot of rust on it, high miles, and the maintenance cost is continuing to increase every year. So that has led us to the need for this new, uh, vehicle and we request your authorization to purchase this vehicle.
Commissioner Heiburger.
So, thanks, Joe. Um, so is this outside of our regular replacement schedule that we do with the sheriff's office? Cause we, we, um, we approve so many per year to be replaced. And so is this like pulling us out of that cycle?
This is, this is in addition to that cycle. So with the vehicles that we purchased with our twenty twenty, uh, originally budgeted funds, those, that has been accomplished. This is a, an end of year identification that we, we try to squeeze every much as we can out of our vehicles. And this would be one that eventually we would replace in some year, but it's kind of gone downhill faster than we thought. And rather than wait to order another vehicle, which is something the manufacturers have said that they are getting really far behind with shortage of parts and inventory due to COVID, that any vehicles we'd place in order, we wouldn't see for six to eight months potentially. And having this one ready to go would help alleviate that.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So that takes us to item sixteen, which is to consider a motion to authorize the Equalization Department to purchase a twenty twenty Chevy Equinox from Billion Auto in the amount of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, my name's Kyle Sexey with the Equalization Office. Um, pretty much kind of the same scenario. We had a two thousand and three Chevy that was pretty much on its last leg and it would cost more to fix it than what it is worth. So, uh, we're just requesting the approval to purchase a twenty twenty Chevy Equinox LS from Billion. Uh, they were able to match the state bid price, so we figured we'd go locally instead of out of state.
Any questions?
Sorry, again, you said it was the same, but is it, this is out of your twenty twenty budget and was this excess funding or funding that was excess funding?
Excess funding.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Commissioner Karski.
We saw the pictures of the oh-three. I'm glad we're giving you a new one, not the one that, um, Captain Bosman was just talking about. So I think this is a
Yes, thank you.
A good idea.
All right, so we had a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to item seventeen, which is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement with Short, Elliott, Hendrickson for MC twenty-one dash zero one County Highway one thirty Traffic Operations Corridor Study. DJ.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothia, Highway Superintendent. Uh, the highway department has been working with the MPO and, and the state and SEH uh, to develop a scope for a study on County Highway one oh-three. Uh, this is the Renner Highway. It's from I twenty-nine over to Highway one thirty-seven, which is, uh, the Crooks Road. Uh, just over two miles of, of study area. And, uh, next year they will be performing a study, uh, looking at the traffic, looking at future improvements, intersection, uh, potential redesigns at the, uh, Crooks and Highway one thirty intersection. And then also looking at some proposed access management requirements, uh, for future development in, on that corridor. Uh, this corridor has seen some really significant traffic increases over the last few years. Uh, a few years especially with the developments of Foundation Park and the industrial development on the northwest corner, that interstate interchange. And so, uh, working with the MPO, this is going to be a grant-funded project. I think it's an eighty-twenty. Our costs are uh, about thirteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. We had budgeted thirty-six thousand dollars, not knowing how much this project would cost. Uh, the estimate or the proposal from the consultant came in at seventy-five thousand dollars. So, um, if you have any questions, I can answer them at this time. Otherwise, we, uh, look for your approval for this agreement.
Questions? Dovetails nicely with one of our last items where we have a contract with the MPO, which just shows how that provides value to the county. Commissioner Karski.
DJ, you mentioned it, but kind of, how will this study relate or will it factor in the growth of the Foundation Park and everything that's going on there? I mean, I hate to do a study before we know what everything's going to be, so, uh, will it come together that way?
That's the intent. So, uh, we're doing a study looking at land uses of Foundation Park and other proposed development area based off of master plans at Planning Office and in Sioux Falls, I'm Planning Office and Minnehaha County have prepared. And so we know, or we expect that we know what kind of future developments, industrial developments will be occurring in that area. And, and so they'll have a fairly good handle or estimate on, on future track, traffic volumes over the next ten, twenty, thirty, forty years. And then, and then once the results from this study are, are, are learned, uh, we would look through the budgeting process maybe over the next five years and see where we might want to do some, uh, uh, some upgrades or some improvements to this corridor. And I, I mentioned the one thirty-seven, one thirty intersection, uh, that there's some safety concerns there and some very significant traffic concerns there. And so this study should really hopefully guide us and direct us on what type of improvements should be done there. We've talked about a roundabout before. Uh, we've talked about signals before, uh, multiple lane additions for turn lanes, that type of thing.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Just a habit there, Gene.
Yeah, I know. Commissioner Barth raised his hand, which I thought was great. Um, item eighteen, consider a resolution authorizing the highway department to apply for a bridge improvement grant funds for preservation of structures fifty dash two seven nine and fifty dash three three zero dash zero six six. DJ.
Commissioners, in two thousand and fifteen, the state legislature, uh, started the Bridge Improvement Grant Program. And, and we've participated on different projects over the years, uh, since two thousand and fifteen. Uh, one of the, the programs that they have are bridge preservation projects. That's different than the bridge reconstruction projects that we've participated in the past. The Bridge Improvement Grant, uh, for the, uh, preservation, it looks to do really heavy maintenance type of work on bridges as opposed to replacing the bridges. Uh, we've identified two projects through our bridge inspection process and through meetings with the State Department of Transportation that would be really good candidates for the, uh, for the preservation program. And on the second page there are, are the two examples for these bridges. Uh, the first one, that fifty dash two seventy-nine dash one forty, to do a preservation project on that, the consultant is estimating that it'd be just under one point seven million dollars. Uh, the cost to replace that structure would be over two point nine million dollars. So, uh, the rule that, uh, the state and the federal government uses, if you can extend the life beyond ten years, then it would qualify for this type of a project. We think that extending, um, or doing this type of work would extend the, the life of this bridge much longer than ten years. Uh, both of these, uh, or the first one there, that includes a deck replacement. And so the rest of the bridge is in pretty good shape, but replacing the deck that's in really poor shape, which would ultimately lead to a reconstruction project, replacing the deck now would extend this bridge probably thirty years. That would be my guess. And, and so this agreement is for the preliminary design. It looks at, uh, uh, the scope of the project, that identifies the actual preservation work that needs to be done uh, and starts that design process and really finalizes the construction costs. And then we would reapply next year for the grant program to do the construction. Uh, the preliminary engineering portion of this for the two structures is about twenty-five thousand dollars. The award process and the preservation fund is different than the reconstruction fund. It's not as objective. There's, um, some subjectivity that the DOT uses to award these projects. And so we don't know until they receive all of the applications and review them, if they would award any or if they would award both of these, or if they would just award one of them. We did give them a priority. Uh, the first one that's listed there is our first priority and then the second one is a second priority. We're prepared to move forward if they did award both of them, uh, with the preliminary engineering in twenty twenty-one. And then hopefully construction, uh, for one or both of them either in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. It's a three-year, uh, funding, uh, opportunity that, that you have with the grant. And so, um, that second bridge, the preservation cost, it doesn't include, um, as much work and it's a smaller structure. So the preservation work is one point two million dollars. If we did not preserve this bridge and we had to reconstruct it in the next ten years or so, uh, the reconstruction cost would be about two point one million dollars. So, um, we feel that this is a really economical way to manage our bridge system, uh, with these two bridges in particular. And we look for your approval. And, and today the resolution is authorizing us to submit a grant application uh, for the preliminary design for these two structures. And then once we receive back, word back from the DOT, we will, uh, we'll come back to the commission for accepting those grants.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Thanks, TJ, um, for your comments. I'm wondering, so if this significantly is going to extend the life of these bridges, if we don't get the grants, are they on our schedule to repair these grants and save us millions of dollars?
No, we will, um, we'll continue to maintain them the best that we can right now, so we don't have to replace them. And then we would apply for the preservation grant again in the future, the next year.
But at some point, I mean, at some point you put it on the list five years down the road or something? Because if we don't ever get the preservation grant and it's going to save us millions of dollars, we should be doing it.
Yes, technically we would do that, but we feel pretty strongly that we would get the preservation grant. Uh, within the next couple of years.
Commissioner Benega.
I kind of had the same question, but I would, uh, maybe ask how long does it take the state before they review the process to come up with the results of the scoring system and let us know what's going on?
We're expecting March, that we will know. We're hoping sooner than that. Uh, one thing that they did this year with, with the process, uh, there were pre-applications that were due, I think, uh, end of October, beginning of November. And so we submitted them information and we've been working with the state on these two structures for quite a while. But, uh, we submitted the, the draft application so they could look them over and give us some guidance on how to best prepare our grant application, uh, for submittal. And so they've seen them already. I think most of the counties did that. And so I think that the state has a pretty good idea, which will really minimize their review time. Uh, they, once they review them, they have to take it to, uh, the State Transportation Commission for approval. And we would expect that in February or March. They have monthly meetings.
Thank you.
Commissioner Karski.
Just reading the description of work for Structure one forty, the, your number one priority.
Mm-hmm.
Two hundred and eighty-five foot long. It's almost as long as a football field. It's fifty-six years old. We're looking at expanding, extending it for probably twenty years with the amount of work on it. I mean, it, it, um, seems to be a good use of money to make that happen. So, um, you know, what, what did you think it would cost to build this bridge now?
Two point nine million is the current estimate.
Three million? Okay, okay.
Yeah, this is an excellent candidate. And this is really, bridge preservation wasn't very popular, uh, in the nation thirty years ago. And it's really been pushed because of public funding is, is just short on transportation issues. And so, uh, bridge preservation has just been pushed more and more and more. And, and that's why we have grant programs like this set up.
I don't know if I said the number of vehicles. I mean, this isn't a, a bridge that has twenty vehicles a day. This has pushing two thousand vehicles a day traveling over this bridge.
Yeah, I don't know if you put the ADT in here, but you're right. It's probably more than two thousand.
It's just under seventeen hundred, yeah. And it's not going to go down, so.
Any other comments or questions?
Move approval.
Second.
So motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So that takes us to item nineteen, authorize the chair to sign a software agreement and a software license agreement with Core EMR for the Jail Electronic Medical Records Program. Warden Mattson, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, we have a software license and a software agreement with Core EMR that, uh, we would like to take the responsibility for and have the county hold that, that license and that agreement. Um, historically, the, our medical vendors, um, held that. During our transition that we're doing right now, we found that it's more advantageous for the county to hold that. There's data forms that are site-specific in that program. And if the vendor has the license and the agreement, Core EMR, um, doesn't have to leave those with the county. And if we hold the license in the agreement, then all those forms that are made up for our specific site on the program stay with us. So there's no further development if, if and when we change vendors again.
Thank you for that explanation. Are there other questions?
Madam Chair, I have a question not to do with this motion, though.
Can we, can we wait and ask after we take action on this?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Warden, I believe that Commissioner Barth has another question for you.
I just wanted to ask how things are going with the COVID and stuff, you know? The ICUs are full. How's the jail doing?
Oh, we're doing well. Obviously, we had a bit of an uptick. We had an uptick with some staff. That's leveled down. We're on a decline, so things are looking pretty good.
Thank you.
Be back.
All right. That takes us to item 20, which is to authorize the chair to sign the 2021 Sioux Falls Metropolitan Planning Organization Agreement between Minnehaha County and Southeastern Council of Governments. Craig Dewey.
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. I don't think I've ever come up at so many different points in a commission meeting before for items. I just used to stand it up here and go through the lines. So, this is with the Southeastern Council of Governments, known as CCOG. They have a metropolitan planning organization that involves different local governmental units, really help get together and help try and plan out some transportation planning and other planning and zoning efforts to make sure that there is generally some form of consistency or effort being put into designing what the local area will look like moving into the future. And one thing that I think our community has really benefited from over the decades is thoughtful planning that has taken place in our municipalities and out in the county as well. So, this agreement has been reviewed by our civil attorneys, and this is an annual agreement for participation in this. And I believe we have three different individuals from the commission who are liaisons to the UDC meetings that take place. Commissioners Barth, Benega, and Karski have been on that this year. We'll see who's on it next year. But it does take active participation throughout the year, as those three commissioners are aware. Generally, there were not really any changes except for dates as far as the 2021 agreement compared to the 2020 agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions, though.
Questions for Craig? Now, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 21, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports today?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth.
Just a comment, in a sense, but in East Dakota Water Development District, we have talked about swales as a way of reducing flooding. If you have a concrete
Mean ditches?
Actually, in cities, you know, it's like save your rainwater, hold it on your own land instead of squishing it down the road quick to your neighbor's property. And so, as we think about our highway department and water running onto their neighbors, retaining it and having it filter through the soil is probably a great thing to think about. And we're doing a lot of studies along those lines in the East Dakota Water Development District.
All right, thank you. Any other liaison reports this morning? If not, new business? Is there any new business?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth.
You know, I guess we sort of missed it, but should we sing "Happy Birthday" to Cindy?
You are welcome to.
You don't have to do that.
I am kind of happy to do it, but not right now, I guess.
Commissioner Bender's saying "Happy Birthday" to me on my birthday.
I did.
She did.
Yeah, it was not, it was not ready for primetime, but it was okay privately.
Again, next time.
All right. Any old business?
We didn't put Commissioner Hybarger's birthday under old business.
There you go. So, we've been particularly kind to her today. All right.
It's decades, so it's new business.
There you go. I'd like to make a comment under old business, which is that Dean and Gerald working on this highway department thing is really a great contribution. I can see it's been very intensive and not, not easy trying to squeeze, you know, 10 pounds into an eight-pound bag. I want to thank you guys for doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. Untold number of hours of work. People have no idea. All right, anything else under old business? If not, I'd entertain a motion to recess.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will reconvene, let's try, well, about 10 after 11. Give ourselves a 10-minute break.